If there are no objections to the minutes for July 1st, 2021, regular meeting are approved. Approval of requisitions on July 15th, about 15,021, $35,789.32. If there are no objections, that the requisition will be approved. For approval accounts payable from July 8, 2021, the amount of $1,466,5492. If there are no objections, that would be approved. For accounts approval payable on July 15, 2021, for a amount of $251,811.86. If there are no objections, that amount is approved. For approval of manual checks for July 9, 2021, for an amount of $10,682.83. If there are no objections, that is approved. And for manual checks for July 16, 2021, the amount of $417,111.35. If there are no objections, that is approved. For approval payable for July 8, 2021, for a amount of $266,201.48. If there are no objections, that is approved. Right, so we're moving on to agenda number one. Laura Storm, Circuit Clerk, requesting to fill part-time position in the Circuit Clerk's office. If this is, uh, Storm is online, please? There we go, can you hear us, Laura? Can you hear us, Laura? I don't, is our speakers or what?
Yeah.
Hey, 'cause I thought the speakers light up, Stephanie.
We changed it because we don't have to use them.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And I'm having another person just say the name click. I'm gonna, I'm gonna text her and tell her she can just go over here.
Okay, she's, okay, she's.
She's in her office. Yeah, she's in your office. Laura, can you hear us? Laura, we can't hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, did she give us a thumbs up?
Can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear?
Nothing.
I think she differs my text messages to the Laura look down, so I think she read.
All right, so we'll jump to agenda number two. Tell Laura, don't, she doesn't have to run.
Okay.
All right, and move into agenda number two. Nancy Strawn, CDVG and Home Administrator, City of Martinburg, approval of resolution for Jefferson County, West Virginia, authorizing participation in the Eastern Panhandle Consortium of West Virginia. And you have the seat at front.
Hi, I'm Ruth Ali. That's why I like to go in person.
Yeah.
You know, we've witnessed, we have problems with our home consortium. Anyway, this is my last journey. I've been around my whole Eastern Panhandle. Every three years, I go out to the 11.
Eleven?
The 11 restrictions. I started in Polk Hall, in April, not Morgan County, Hedgesville, Berkeley, Martinsburg, then coming over here, Boulevard, Charlestown, Branson, Harpers Ferry, Shepherdstown Tuesday, now here. So here are the last, uh, last place I go before I send these documents to Hutt. Home's the largest federal block grant to state and local governments. And they're designed exclusively for affordable housing for low-income households. And how this works is the city is the co-ness and grantee or the agency. The money flows into the city of Martinsburg, then it flows out to the whole Eastern Panhandle. And with the home consortium, now we pretty much put most of the program in this first-time homebuyers program. And that's what I brought up from brochures, with the new increase in income and also the increase in the home prices. But we put most of the majority of that in that program because it's the most successful, the most bang-for-the-buck. You know, basically, it helps. And I did a little compilation since the last three years. We've done 19 first-time homebuyers in Jefferson County, seven in Branson, four in Charlestown, three in Shepherdstown, three in Harpers Ferry, and two in Kearneysville. And you, Jane, can attest, the last time, that one year, we were struggling. We couldn't get any, so we kind of cowed up. So we're doing real well here in Jefferson County with this program. And then historically, we've helped 320 first-time homebuyers. So how it works, they, we're the gap financing second mortgagee. So like, over 4 million HEAP loans have leveraged 41 million in home sales and 38 in the first mortgage loans. So this helps the, you know, get the little, we go, like, I just had a settlement, it was like $4,000, more than $7,000. And we can go up to 14,500 to help these people buy their first home. Then we do have a set aside, 15% were required for community housing development organizations called CHODO. And right now, the only eligible CHODO is the Eastern Panhandle Habitat for Humanity. And that was the thing I was telling Mayor Trainor and Daryl, that we should really talk about creating another CHODO here in Jefferson County, because we used to have the partnership of affordable housing. So we really need to try to, you know, get something going here, because that's 15%, and Habitat's not spending the money quick enough. But they are doing a project in Shepherdstown, the Sage Place. So, so anyway, kind of recap. But basically, it's just boil and play. The resolution, it's like the resolution you approved back in March. You approved it for the one year, this is for the next three years. So you just have to, you know, have a go to approve the resolution. And then the Home Consortium Cooperative Agreement is a lot of government gobbledygook. It tells you what I do. There's no funding request. You don't, we're not asking for any money, we're just asking you to sign the resolution.
We like you, then.
Yeah.
No, I see I have to work through all this work for you. But I live in Jefferson County.
I just have a question.
So someone interested in taking advantage of this program goes to a mortgage lender who qualifies and applies with pre-proplication information through this program. So the lender doesn't help them apply for it, they just.
Well, they, they do help get the paperwork.
Together, which is why.
I work with the lender to get.
Okay.
Does anybody else?
I guess I was just wondering how long, you said 320 homebuyers. How long has the program been running?
Since 2007.
Thanks. All right, I'll go ahead and move the motion to approve the resolution of authorizing participation in the Eastern Panhandle Consortium of West Virginia for the period of July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2024, to 2027.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Kerry, your answer. Do you want me to sign, right, right here? Yeah.
I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion about the cooperative agreement, because they kind of go hand in hand.
Oh, okay, okay.
I meant that we approve the cooperative agreement entitled Housing Consortium Cooperative Agreement by and between the City of Martinburg and the counties of Berkeley, Jefferson, and Morgan, West Virginia, for the period of July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2024.
I'll second that. And any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Commissioner Kerry, your answer.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. He wants somebody to attest my signature here.
I think somebody even just.
Is that, I didn't see that one there.
We could have Sandy.
Sandy is the.
Yeah, did we have? Oh, that says Jacquet, Jacquet Shaver has to be signed out.
I guess I could, I could send it to her.
Do you need Jacquet to sign this one?
No, I'm just.
Just to test. Okay, great, okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I'll fax that to you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, your girl.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You're welcome, Kerry. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
So we're gonna move back to agenda number one. Laura Storm, Circuit Clerk, requesting to fill part-time position in the Circuit Clerk's office. Sorry, we can see you, but I don't think you can hear us.
Well, we had a jury trial this week, and we're back in the courtroom. But we're utilizing the old county commission room as well with the TV and speakers down there. So I've taken the speakers in my office down there. So I'm thinking, I did not plug something in correctly when I put them back in, because I was like, wait a minute, I think everything is, ah, it doesn't work, so.
Very proud.
I have long legs. Welcome, I am Laura Storm, having had the pleasure of meeting you. I am the Circuit Clerk, as I try to extend to all county commissioners. Anytime you'd like to come over to my office, come in, check things out, see how we work. You'd be more than welcome to do that.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, great, great. I am here to request approval of a part-time person, last budget set, and you all had approved a part-time position for me for one of my projects I'm getting ramped up to work on. I have, I am requesting the approval of a Sandra Aponick, A.P.O.N.I.C.K. I would like her to start on Monday, July 19th, at an hourly rate of $17 an hour. I have $18,000 approved in my part-time budget. She comes with 25 years of extensive organizational skills, Microsoft, Excel, PowerPoint, all of that, which is what I need to help get the, some of these files organized. What had happened between budget time and now, I had another person helping me in the office, bringing our old files from downstairs in the magistrate court building over. We had approximately eight rows of boxes on this large dolly as we came up in the atrium to make the turn into my office. The wheel went down, all files went flying down the steps. So it turned a organizational thing into a much more urgent matter, so that we can get these back to where they need to be. And my discussions with her, she just, just has an amazing thought process for helping me get these organized. So I think she will be amazing. She is only looking for part-time work for a little while, so she was just the perfect candidate. So I do hope you'll allow her to start on Monday.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, so you said part-time for a little while, so is it temporary part-time position?
Yes, when, when, during budget session, Commissioner Hudson had asked how long I was anticipating. And, you know, I had said, you know, right now, you know, I think two years. If any of that changes, I will absolutely come back and discuss it further with you all. But hopefully, we'll be done within two years.
Okay, last, does anybody else?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, or I'll never go put your listen. The Circuit Clerk's office hires Sandra Aponick, $17 per hour, beginning July 19, 2021, temporary part-time position.
I'll say that. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Please, Commissioner Kerry, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
It's nice to be happy.
It is, it is.
Thank you. Laura, you can always, you can always come over for breakfast.
Yeah, you have, everybody has an option. We're gonna, we're gonna use through the virtual stuff for forever.
Oh, okay.
You can do either way.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Absolutely. All right, we're gonna move on to agenda number three. Interview and appointment to the Harp Street Power Public Service District Board, one-year term ending June 27. That's a long term. Yeah. All right.
It's like go to California.
Well, good deal, you wanna tell us, tell us, why do you want to be on that board?
I've been on the board, I think, for maybe four or five years. It's time to get reappointed. We actually have an hard time finding board members for our, we're small.
That's a six-year term, how long?
Yeah, well, no, it's new, and actually coming here is new as well. This has never been done. It's just, if you find somebody, send a letter, and they say, good, thank you. So, yeah, I kind of oversaw the transition to getting rid of a lot of 40-year-old equipment. It's got us to the highest rates in West Virginia, unfortunately, but we had to replace all of the equipment. So our next, you know, I just want to stick with sort of improvement system, getting rid of infiltration problems we have, and trying not to, trying to do that without raising rates at all. We're all pretty sensitive to that, it's on board right now, so. So I have an engineering background, they, the guys like having you there, because they haven't had some engineering background before. So they can bounce ideas off of me and you can, you know, make a good team.
Good, yeah. And you're aware, there's a lot of insurance plugs out there right now from the state government that might help offset your word.
Yeah, well, we put in a request, I thought this might be an opportunity, but I guess in August, you guys are talking about that?
Yeah.
That alone.
Yeah, I know, I was gonna say, next one, answer for Monday. So, yeah, they put in a request that you guys have, like, a working session.
We received it, bless with the man.
Okay, and we're gonna, we have some really good projects, we think, that end with that, and I hope we can make our case very well.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Here, none, you're all in candid. So I'd like to call David Silas to the board of Harp Street Power PSD for a term of, six-year term ending in June 30, 2027.
Second.
Second, and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Kerry, thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
When is your August, August 15th, I was told?
Well, we haven't had that change.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it will be always.
The first Thursday.
Yeah.
First Thursday, last, okay, good, thank you.
Yes, sir. Agenda number four, Roger Newman, Engineering, Last Critical Employment Offer to Fill Position of Office Clerk in Department of Engineering Planning Zone. Yes, sir, floor is yours.
This is, we're asking, requesting approval of an offer of employment to fill the position of office clerk in Department of Engineering Planning and zoning in the engineering office. The position's been vacant since September 2020. The engineering office needs additional help due to the increased workload generated by the construction industry. And we need help with the ongoing digital scanning project as we convert from paper files to digital files. A position will perform office clerical duties, and then we'll also have them cross-train for the building permits technician position, so they can enter permit data and schedule inspections and so forth. We need help there too, especially when we have our plan reviewer and our only two inspectors just hustling on plan reviews and doing inspections. And then you have people this time of year off on vacation. And it's just tough to get people who can fill certain seats. And we have one where we have nobody cross-trained. So, the job description's attached, and the current budgeted salary amount's $35,000 a year. It's budget neutral, because it's been in the budget, it's not a new position. And the person that we're proposing to hire, her name is Madeline Stevenson. And we have a motion there at the bottom.
When would be the effective date, immediately, or? In talking with her, she would like to at least give a minimum of two minutes to her current employer.
Oh, okay.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? I guess we will, the hiring date will be to be determined, I guess, at some.
Yeah, we're gonna start sometime in August.
Okay, all right, we'll do that.
In August.
I'll move to approve the offer of employment for Madeline Stevens, $35,000 per year, to fill the position of office clerk in Department of Engineering Planning and Zoning at a date to be determined by the director. I know she's, we'll have to get two weeks, so you'll determine that date.
And as long as her date is in the minute, that's what we really need, is the commission approval to hire those.
Okay, awesome.
It's nice to have the date, but we don't ask. I'll second that motion.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your answer, thank you.
I definitely say thank you for always being so thorough, your questions. Because it's very refreshing and nice, yeah, to ask a lot of questions.
Yeah, it's for us, too.
I want to thank you guys for all your hard work, because I know you are slammed.
Thank you.
I did turn down the AP because now it's made it clear. And if you want me to turn it back, if you can, just let me know what's a tip for tips, like, what your thoughts are. I'm getting more, it's just.
She has fallen over. Yeah.
You will build up, you will, sir.
Well, if I walk in, that's what.
All right, we're gonna move on to agenda number five. Alyssa Wheeler, you're a Director of Jefferson County Foreland Protection Board, approve a purchase of one agricultural conservation easement. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just running out to see if the object of this discussion was here, the Snyder's, and they aren't. They're, they're, they're coming.
Well, we're running a little early, yeah. Shouldn't we could wait? It would be nice if you.
Okay, yeah. We did, yeah, we can jump around. We have, we have like 13 answers, so. Is, is Steve up?
Yes. Steve?
I'm on.
All right, Steve, we're gonna come to you. Agenda number six, Steve Allen, Director, Jefferson County Homeland Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. Consideration changing requirement for employees in the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management from residing in Jefferson County, born in Jefferson, joining county to live within living, county to living within 50 miles of the office. There we go, there's a ton of questions for there. Go ahead, sir.
Great, thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to meet with you virtually today. I'm on annual leave, however, I can't really say that it's annual leave. It's, it's a staycation, and plenty of honeydew work to be done here at the house. So I appreciate being able to meet with you virtually tonight. As you all are aware, commissioners, in mid-February of this year, you allowed me to post the vacancy that we have for the Deputy Director of Homeland Security in Emergency Management due to a resignation. We promptly posted that information on Facebook pages as, in two or three different locations. And also, when we didn't get a large number of applicants replying to it, we also went through Indeed.com and did receive some additional resumes for the position, to the, to the number of 33 additional resumes. We had four that we got from local people that saw the postings, and then the 33 additional that Indeed provided us with. From the applicants or the resumes, only one from Indeed really met, and we considered them meeting our requirements. However, they did not, and we interviewed that person as well, but had never got back with us. So we have interviewed a total of four applicants so far, and only one is really meeting all the requirements. And in emergency management, it's a very specialized field, along with having experience in it. You don't want someone in charge, and in my absence, that deputy director would be in charge. You don't want someone who has little or no experience in it, and it doesn't have a wealth of knowledge or training in emergency management. So it's a very difficult position to fill. And that's our problem right now, is we're, we're not finding people that live within Jefferson County that meet our requirements, or also our surrounding counties of Frederick, Maryland, and Frederick, Virginia Counties, Loudoun County, Berkeley County, and Clark County. So I'm, I'm asking if we're able to reduce one of the requirements that has to have that person living in either Jefferson or our surrounding counties, and simply making it a 50-mile radius. That will allow us to have people that can come a little bit further than what they are right now with that, the surrounding counties. So it's, it's caused quite a lot of concern for us. And in a conversation I had with the Loudoun County's Deputy Coordinator today, he said even Loudoun County with the salaries, the day off. Deputy Coordinator today, he said even Loudoun County with the salaries that they offer, they have a difficult time in meeting those requirements. And getting a good selection with all the people around the Northern Virginia area. They have some people that come all the way from Alexandria, Virginia to work in emergency management in Loudoun County. So it's quite a travel distance as well. But in order to make it a little easier to have some additional people to apply for the job without having to move. Many of the people, when we start talking to them about the salary, one person that was a pretty good candidate. Once he read the, the job description with the requirements. And then when I explained to him what the starting salary would be, he said, that's, that's, that's just too much work for too little pay. So he said, please drop me from, from consideration on this as well. So that's where we are right now, asking you to allow us to extend that distance out for those residents. A little bit further than what we have right now.
Go ahead.
I always have to comment. I understand we're all named the search and going out and obviously we need to fill the position. I think my main concern with going too far out is this position doesn't have the option to work from home. They have to be here present in the county. So that's just my one concern about going too far out is the commute in conjunction with the pay. I know we're not gonna get anybody east of here to apply for this position because of the salary. So you're gonna have to go west. But I just, I am concerned with that. And as long as if we expand that and the person that you maybe are successful in finding interviewing knows, this is not a work from home. It's not an option to work from home.
If I may, we had an issue with that actually prior to. Work from home issue. The job description says they must be available 24/7, 365 a person. It's in the job description. And I know I'm not on this panel, I'm not on the interview panel for that position, but Deputy County Administrator McDonald is. And I know that it is stressed in the interview that that is a requirement, that if there's a disaster, you will be here with us. Not, you know, not.
Yeah, because even the 24/7 available means.
I think the job description makes it pretty clear that you have to be in the.
Okay.
We, I think that's a question that they're actually asked is, do you have a problem if we call you on a Saturday night?
Right.
At nine o'clock because, you know, we've had a problem here. You understand you will be here with us by 9:45 PM on Saturday. And another thing I just wanted to add to this discussion is that we have had historically for many years turnaround in that deputy director position. They come here, they get the experience that they need and then they move to the federal level. So we've had a lot of people, it makes us look good because they moved up into the, into federal jobs. But so we have historically had some high turnaround in that deputy director position. So if we can get someone who's maybe a little further out who will stay a little longer. That might be, and maybe we might want to tweak the job description so that it is very clear that you are required to be a good person. So I can make that change if that's the situation.
Commissioner Jackson, your, your concern is very important and I think very, based on our past experience. Very. And I would just say that I spoke to Mr. Allen about this a good bit too, and that weighs heavily on your mind that. We obtained someone who is available. I just wanted to assure you.
Well, certainly our director needs some backup. I mean, healthy times, like, you know, he does have a right to go on vacation, you know? And have a sick day, you know? Someone else to back.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to change the requirements for the employees in the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. From residing in Jefferson County or joining county to living within a 50 mile radius of travel time to the office.
Second that. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Steve.
Thank you all very much. I really appreciate the help that you're giving me in working toward this end to get that person on board. And once we're successful with that, then we'll be moving toward the administrative assistant, public information officer position fill, fill as well. Because we have that vacancy as well, but one step at a time, exactly. Thank you all.
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. All right. Moving back to agenda number five, Alyssa Wheeler, Director of Jefferson County Department of Protection Board approval of purchase of one agricultural conservation easement.
And I'd like to introduce Mr. and Mrs. Snyder, who are the property owners.
All right. All right.
We'll be quick with this, don't try too comfortable. Thank you for, for your time. I am here to request your approval of the Farm Land Protection Board's purchase of an agricultural conservation easement on. 306.674 acre farm known as Shennstone, Cavantown. And the board has committed 603,559 dollars for the purchase of the easement. Snyder's donated 40% of the easement value to the county, which amounts to 402,475 dollars. Very generous contribution to the county. And the county funds, the board has, has committed these funds for easements since September of 2020. And that is a request, just a little background on the property, it's, it's part of the lands that the Washington family claimed in the early 1800s. And the Snyder family has owned and farmed the property since 1892. It's 129 years. It's been same family. Agriculturally, it ranked very high. It has 82% private important soils, it's a very production farm. And adding this property will, to, to the program will increase our protected farmland to 5,867 acres.
I'm very excited about this, so I'm gonna make a motion and then we can discuss. I'm going to the Jefferson County Commission to approve the purchase by the Jefferson County Farm Land Protection Board. For the Jefferson County Farm Land Protection Program, one conservation easement on the property in Jefferson County. Owned by William N. Snyder and Mary S. Snyder.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Solberg, I would just let you know that I reviewed the.
There's a motion. Second before, is there any discussion? I do have one question. I'm just curious the timeframe from start to finish to when, when this, I'm just always curious how long these things take.
As you know, we've had this conversation.
Yes, we have.
And I'm sure you've talked to a lot of landowners who, who don't like the timeframe. In this case, this is a county only purchase. And Snyder's applied in 2019. And the process. That takes so long is all of the due diligence and title work and surveys and.
Appraising laws and raising assets.
On that.
And so on, so it is very thorough process and a very lengthy process. And that's just kind of, we have the federal government involved that we tack on another year.
Okay. Yeah, I said.
I have a reputation as a rottweiler among the vets. And so. I'm always nipping at their heels about, you know.
Yeah. Liz is very good and tenacious and tracking down details that I would just be pulling my hair out on, you know, saying, isn't it obvious? Yeah. You know, the fed wants that, you know?
And to that, to that topic, I'm working currently on another four farms that are total of almost 700 acres. But that's in a harbor of funding reasons. We're working through.
I'm sure you're seeing more money now coming in because of the tax thing.
Yes.
And we're closing more properties, so you have more money to work with.
There is more money coming in and we're, we're opening up our next funding cycle. Starting to advertise that, I'm sending it, I already put some, some advertisement out and we're sending a postcard to every single landowner who has property over 20 acres. So that's a note.
So that deadline's in October, isn't it?
Yes. You can have a question.
Okay, it's quite, it's quite a project when you're dealing with the federal government on these things because. We've worked through several of them and mostly Ms. Wheeler does the interaction with it. But it just, you change one thing and then you send it to one department and then it goes the round of like 10 different departments and different people. And it's crazy. It's a big project.
Yeah, the federal role for. This program is hundreds of pages.
And they change?
And then they change. Except they don't tell you. Anyway. But the program is successful, it's popular. I'm really pleased that we're able to include Mr. and Mrs. Snyder in this program.
Sure. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you all to Mr. and Mrs. Snyder for, for kind of just.
Yeah, and I want to thank him personally for that 40% donation. That is very, very generous.
That helps.
Yes, it helps at all. I brought a copy of our annual report in case you've received it last year. Always have money, come on, but I will pass that in. And thank you, Jefferson.
Yes, thank you, thank you, ma'am. We have our, we're running ahead of schedule, so we won't start the public hearing on the impact pieces until 7:10. We have roughly 25 minutes, we have a couple minutes here. We're gonna move, any suggestions, Stephanie?
We can go ahead and do some new business.
Yeah.
All right. Yes, okay, so we're gonna move to agenda number 10, discuss opening the county commission meeting up to the public. This is something I put on the agenda to discuss. As you saw here earlier, we have, I don't know, we had six, just, just with applicants, we had six people in the room at the same time. So I, I do suggest that we have a couple of chairs reserved for applicants and then the rest would be open for public for a first come, first served kind of gig. It does put a little. Stress on our bayonet back here to kind of make sure, you know, keep the peace and whoever comes first can be sitting in the seat maybe. I don't, I don't know if we have 10 people show up, we only have three seats, what we're gonna do though?
I think that, yes, they may ask them to find an advance to attend and give you something like that if you're in town. Or we could do first come, first served.
Because my, yeah, what do you, what do you think?
Yeah, so we decided, or we, when we were gonna open back up, it was based on a little bit of social distancing guidelines. So we have a capacity and that's one of the reasons we ask them to let us know if they're gonna be there. And it is first come, first served.
Oh, at night of the meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm kind of wondering. Is this numbered what the department helps say we can have in the space? That's what I want to know square footage wise and if, if we can move back, we should have a little more room.
Yeah, you can have more if you move back. We did.
But I know that they're to the camera.
So yeah, I asked them to space the chairs apart to see how many could fit in here. So we have eight chairs, you know, to be able to, if that's somebody there, can probably sit people hallway. So if we did move you back, we could probably put another row chair in.
Why don't we do this? Certainly move the motion to do this as well. Let me just go a brief. I'll go ahead and move the motion to open, to, for the county commission meetings to open back up for the public. We will have reserve six chairs. We will reserve six chairs for applicants and staff that have seats. The remaining seats will be for the public, first come, first served basis. We'll let staff determine how they arrange the room. All right. So. Does anybody want a second? We'll discuss if I have to change it.
Well, I'll second that. I would like to have the opinion of the health department, how we could maybe maximize.
And I will, I will amend my motion to, to have the opinion of the health department or whatever state agency we need to go on. It's the government's office, health department, whoever it is. But whoever that state agency is will, will consult with them.
Yeah.
I think probably the health. I think it's.
The guidelines are put out for every other establishment.
Oh, yeah.
But I mean, you know, we're gonna have to be concerned about getting people jammed up in the hallway and all that too.
Yeah, that's the, the only concern, that's the only concern that I have is.
I want people in here.
Yeah, so you, I mean, at the ESA you register and there is a deadline to register. Okay, it's not just show up for.
That's what, I think that would be easier because you could have, you know, you could have 20 people show up because it's a hot topic.
Yeah, and just for management, you could cut it off the day before our meeting or what. You know, whatever, you all just hide as management.
How would they show, how would they sign up?
They could email Sandy or Jessica, you know, we have an email. We put, we put it out there to say if you're interested in attending in person, please let us know. And you have to sign up by, we'll say 5:00 PM, the Wednesday.
And you might have to dedicate one, make an email address just for that. So then, yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, then we just want, you know, once they've registered, follow up confirmation, letting them know that they can participate and don't have them showing up.
Yeah.
I registered.
Yeah. Yeah. Just the maintenance. Yeah, so we would say, you know, and then once we, once we reach our limit.
And then I would highly recommend that if somebody signs up and they don't show up and there's people on this, the next time they sign up, they go to the bottom of the list.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, just, I mean, you don't want somebody to sign up at every meeting and not show up, just have a vacant seat and somebody wants to work and watch.
And Sandy is the beginning, we can put it on our words, we'll put, we'll put on the agenda. Sit out, we'll post it on the alert that we sent out, we'll put it on Facebook page as well.
Okay.
So we'll let people know. And then once we reach, reach the maximum, we'll say, okay, will you, first maximum, we'll put you if you're interested in the next meeting, we'll put you on.
Okay. And whatever, whatever you don't want to do, save the seats. If you don't want to have a slip cover over top of them, say reserved or whatever, and what y'all. Whatever y'all, whatever y'all come up with.
Okay.
Yep. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Do you formally amend it because we're voting on first come, first served?
Oh, I will amend my motion to sign up one line. When did you say?
Well, up to staff to determine the deadline.
Yes, I guess I was in my motion that it was.
But you were registered.
It is not first come, first served, but it is a, you register, register with our staff. At the time they fill.
Pre-registered.
You pre-registered, there you go. Let's amend the motion and have a second. Commissioner Tan, is there any discussion?
Yeah.
All right. All right, good deal. And all in favor, say aye. Post, motion carries. Appointment, a appointment, a commission, commission as liaison to the Telemont Community Board. Is that, what is?
So it's a. It's a board that helps with.
Tell them.
I mean, so usually it's the person who is the representative. On, on housing boards or maybe region nine, they all kind of tie it together. Usually the commission goes, maybe it could be any commissioner.
And their, their mission is deep in their bylaw. Telemont helps the homeless veterans, right? To basically relaunch back into society, try to be self-sustaining and relaunch back into.
Okay. Do we have any commissioners who want to volunteer?
Well, I, I don't know what, I'm not volunteering, I just want to know when they meet. I mean, I have these dates, but I don't know the day and the.
You volunteer, we'll tell you, we'll send you the date. I don't know, you know the date, time they meet.
And where do they meet? Maybe it's in here in the Bible, as I should have.
They need more, remember? Is that what I was reading?
So it looks like the first Wednesday of one month. Not, and not.
Right, you're gonna make another month. Beginning of January, five monthly. At locations chosen by the board?
Yes.
So because it's one of those regional boards, it probably. Like region nine, region nine. Like Region Nine, Region Nine.
So they meet the first Wednesday?
Five monthly.
Five monthly.
Starting January, then they begin in March, or yes, then in May.
And, and then, and they, there's certain locations?
Yes.
Okay, so kind of probably floats around, I guess.
Yes, I think it's one of the, it's a regional.
Okay. And do you know if they meet live or?
No, no.
Okay. Does anybody want, do you have any volunteers that want to do that?
I would, but I unfortunately wouldn't be able to make this September first meeting, so I don't know if I could get that.
Well, Commissioner Jackson will volunteer.
I'm glad for punishment.
Yeah.
I want to get everything.
Well, you know, if you want to do it and Commissioner Jackson goes to the meeting, I mean, we have coverage, you can certainly go to the back zone or call today.
Yeah.
Yeah, y'all call today.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need, we don't need to vote on anything. Just, right?
No, no, I think you do need to appoint the, yeah, you do need to appoint the person, so.
Oh, okay, well, there's a motion to, to appoint Commissioner Jackson and Commissioner Ad, that they can alternate meeting times to the Telomon Board. You have a second?
Second.
I'll favor say I.
Aye.
Oppose motion carries. We're in, but we'll have to be all changing.
Yeah. Because I always, you know, they need me to attend a meeting for them, just let me know if I will attend a meeting and say I'm here. They were available, so just let me know and I'll be happy to do that.
Yeah, I just did the housing for the mayor.
Okay.
Anyway, it's very interesting. Oh, that's very interesting how to address the homeless.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to approval of professional services agreement with the West Virginia Development Office for land use review of the Hilltop Tourism Development District.
So where's, I'm still drafting this document, but I'll give you the background of what I need your approval to do. So I need to maybe aware the legislation, last year that passed to create the Tourism Development District for the Hilltop Project in Herford, Sperry. What that does is it creates a district based on certain criteria, the Hilltop Project meets that criteria and once they qualify, they tourism development district and the development is under the authority of the, the Economic Development Office and they process the application. The Development Office reached out to us to help with the land use approvals because that's not, either, they don't, they don't have expertise in that, they don't have a staff that has a background in land use. So they had reached out to the county to see if we would assist with those approvals, particularly building inspections, use and occupancy. And they would allow us, they would reimburse us for what we would normally get to do those inspections if the project had been in the county. So it does remove, it removes the project from the, if it's in a municipality or removes it from the municipal jurisdiction. However, building codes are the same throughout the state, so it would be very easy for our staff to step in and do those, you know, do those reviews. For zoning and planning, I did ask them if, if we have to do those reviews that we use the county ordinance instead of the municipal ordinance because obviously our staff is more familiar with our ordinance than learning a new municipal ordinance. We did meet with the Development Office and I have Roger Goodwin on that phone call as well to, you know, to discuss what the fees potentially might be and if his office would be able to do that. And we do perform reviews for other, we have intergovernmental agreements with other municipalities to help with their ordinances, especially those ordinances that require an engineer to administer them. So we have agreed with Herford, Sperry already, we administer their flood lane ordinance, of course.
Stormwater.
And stormwater because they do not have an engineer. So it'd be very similar to that. So what I need your authority to do is pending Nathan's approval of a contract is to approve the engineering office to do that review on behalf of the West Virginia Development Office. And they can, they can collect no more than one hundred thousand dollars, so that's the maximum fee that they can charge Hilltop to do the review. However, Roger estimates looking at the project, that it will probably cost between, I would say fifty-five and sixty-five thousand dollars. I did, and Commissioner Salbert was in that meeting with us as well, so I kind of skipped a little bit out of turn to say that if it, if the cost exceeded a hundred thousand dollars because we believe in the project and we believe that it's going to be a benefit to the county when it is completed, that we would not charge over one hundred thousand dollars to do the review. But I think it's going to come in well under that and most of the review will be related to the building code, which again is uniform throughout the state. So there's, there shouldn't, there shouldn't be a concern that we're applying a code that Herford, Sperry doesn't already have because everybody has to have the same building code. So we're only nearing that in the county, we'd just be doing it on this project, so just be another project that we're entering and we would enter into an agreement with the Development Office to do that.
Do you mind having any questions? Like, should, like, sometimes in that meeting, obviously, West Virginia Development Office cannot charge you more than a hundred to review the plans or review the application, excuse me. So certainly we couldn't charge you more than that anyway. So I think just the tax application, just for our straight line, it's like a million dollars a year with this up running. So that'll, that'll, that's not what the county receives tax.
And based upon Roger's rough estimates, I can't imagine that it would, like, the price would double.
Yeah.
So. The agreement will say that it will not, that it will, the fees will not exceed one hundred dollars.
Okay. All right, I'm going to move the motion to approve the, well, first off, to approve a professional services agreement with the West Virginia Development Office for review of the Hilltop, of the Hilltop Tourism Development District to allow our engineering, our engineering office to review the application and the, the fees will not exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? I'll favor say I.
Aye.
Oppose motion carries and answer.
And I just wanted to say that the reason this is odd, and there's such a quick turnaround, is because the Development Office is under a deadline pursuant to the regulations to enter into an agreement with Hilltop for the Tourism Development District, so they needed the information from us. And what I needed is to know that you would allow our staff to do, to enter into the agreement to do it. And we'll work up, we're working on the details with the Development Office right now.
Sure. Absolutely. Well, the sooner we get this project up and running, the sooner we can certainly benefit the county and, and the cities.
Yes, it will be.
City, or town, excuse me, town. I can't believe they've been playing this project for thirteen years. It's nice to have some pro-business people that counsel that.
And we had actually, I mean, this is, this is, this plan is actually something that we had offered before, before this legislation was even passed. We said, well, could we help you do some review because they do have a small staff in Herford, Sperry, but it just didn't work out at that time. So we've actually contemplated this for four years and we might end up doing review.
Okay, good deal. All right, well, thank you. I think we talked earlier, there's no updates on the complex project. And then we'll discuss in creating a Director of Emergency Services position.
So this is an idea that's still forming in my mind and today when I was thinking about it, it's the same, so I, I'd like the commission to at least advise, to direct me to explore creating a position and it might involve changing the job descriptions or at least the job titles of some individuals. But what I'm thinking is, and I know it's called Director of Emergency Services here, but I might like to change the title. So I would change Sandy's title to Assistant County Administrator and change the name of this position to Deputy County Administrator for Emergency Services. And then that person would be under, would be a Deputy County Administrator for Emergency Services for the nine-one-one center in emergency management. And possibly we could move over the, the ESA employees and provide that service directly through the county without, and just provide that directly as a county service. If the commission is interested in exploring that. And then that person would manage those employees and you'd have the division chairs, which would be, you know, still the departments, so you still have to have individual departments. There are certain requirements in each of the code sections for each of those, for each director of those departments to have. So this would be kind of an intermediary, they, they could serve as the Public Information Officer, so we may possibly be able to eliminate the Public Information Officer position because now this deputy county, this new position would serve as the Public Information Officer during a disaster. And they would serve as a liaison between all of the departments that, or all of the entities that those two or three departments interact with. And so essentially you're consolidating all of your emergency management under one director and then you would still have the division chairs, but those chairs would now report to the deputy, this, this new deputy county administrator position.
Okay.
So, and I don't have a job, because I'm asking you to give me the authorization to create a job description, explore, you know, investigate how it would work and come back to you with a plan on how to implement, implement what is still developing in my head.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I'm certainly, we're not committing to anything other than trying to come up with a job description and job title, job description, job title, job, everything else.
Yes.
So I'll go ahead and move the motion to our county administrator to create a job description, job title of a new position for, I'll just say, emergencies services. Is that, is that fair enough?
And I know that it, when you, I think now when we think of emergency services, we automatically think of the ESA because that's the name of their board. I tried to think of something else, but I think calling it a Deputy County Administrator of Emergency Services, what you're doing is you're just consolidating all of your emergency services under someone. I know a little bit about everything, just to be dangerous, but I don't, you know, but this would be, I envision this position of being an expert in all of those fields who can really direct that and then that person who report, can make that position will report to me and those people under that position will report to them. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking is, is really consolidating all of the public safety with the exception of a sheriff that the county.
I'm going to second Commissioner Salbert's motion and I think it would, as you work through this exploration, needs to be like a chart draft. But who's, who's, who's the head cheese, second charge cheese?
I didn't want to do too much of a, I don't know if it was something the commission wasn't interested in.
Sure. And I know you'll look at this, but I just have a question on the nine-one-one reporting structure. I know that has to report, like, to the county commission, so it'd be another layer of management.
There's.
I have concerns about.
Yeah, I think they would still be reporting directly to the county because technically the nine-one-one reports to me and then I report to you. But they would still report to the county commission, there would be, I mean, their ultimate end goal is to the county commission. But I would definitely appreciate your temperature, but that is consistent with the convention.
Yeah, but they're not just their own little family.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, you have another layer of management in there, it's, I don't know.
Yeah.
I just, I know code, what, what is very specific about the reporting of communications because I think it's.
Well, yeah, and all that would have to be taken into account with Ms. Grover and I discussed this somewhat earlier this week. And one of the advantages of, of having it structured this way would be an increased awareness of what the different departments are doing because you would have one director that would be looking at everything that's happening in those departments. And I think, you know, there's been, sometimes there's been a little bit of either friction or just one part not knowing what the other part's doing. And it might help with that, that to me would seem to be the big positive of that, of this structure, but of course, you know, Ms. Grover is, is just kind of exploring it.
And I just, yeah, I just have a, I mean, just consider, I think a title might be Public Safety Officer or.
Okay.
Something like that instead of Emergency Services.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion, a motion, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll favor say I.
Aye.
Oppose motion carries, you answer. We are running five minutes ahead of the public hearing that we have scheduled. Is there anybody online that we could go ahead and jump to that maybe, or what do you think?
There is one. Oh, we have lots of people.
Okay.
So we think they didn't need to be five minutes early?
All right, Ms. Grober. If we begin five minutes early, it would certainly bleed over into the time that it was.
Yes.
That it was scheduled.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. But we're going to go ahead and, and have the public hearing, it's a consideration of the draft revised in that week. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Grober real fast and then we'll, we'll open up for public hearing. If, you will have three minutes to, obviously, for the public hearing. Mrs. Grober will explain to you how you raise your hand and how to unmute yourself and I'll let you step over there. All right.
So I see that Governor Lino has already raised her hand. We don't, we also will have just general public comment. If there are individuals in the public who want to make a public comment about the way that it's not related to impact fees, so this is just related to impact fees. If you're interested in making public comment, you can raise your hand and I will unmute you and allow you to make your comment. And you'll have, as Commissioner Salbert said, you'll have three minutes to do that. And I'll just go in the order that I see the names right now on my list and I know Mr. Johnson has had to stay up the entire meeting.
Okay, all right.
So Keith Johnson. I can, so if I unmute, I can.
We're the record, we may be two minutes early now, I think.
You can always count on me. Okay, Mr. Johnson. Regular old, he did both. Our next individual was Mr. Dave Leven. Mr. Leven, you just need to unmute yourself, you can also share your camera.
Evening, how are you guys?
Good, welcome.
Oh, so I'm an advocate for a wonderful education for our children and I certainly believe our school system should be funded. But I think funding our school system through an impact fee is detrimental to the school system, their future budget. And the reason being is quite simple, is that the impact fee can only be used for capital improvements. And the easiest thing I can think of are all the wonderful signs around the county about the school that says, "The future home of X Y Z," like Shepherdstown Elementary School. However, the problem with this is our school system's not growing. In the last decade, we've lost right around nine hundred students in our enrollment. And by forcing the school systems to acquire land or build additional buildings that, quite frankly, in my opinion, would be empty with the current, their current enrollment forces them to create a budget crisis that is either pending or pending in the future. So every time they go out and buy land, there's something to be maintained that the impact fee can't be used for. So they have to buy this land with impact fee, then they have to maintain land, maintain the signs, mow it, and it further stresses the school system and their budget. And in my opinion, that's probably why the bond was brought up by the school system. And I think if we continue to fund the schools with impact fees, all of the taxpayers are going to have the consequence of it by perpetual bonds that get higher and higher every year. Thank you for your consideration and my thoughts. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Our next individual is Mr. Lynch Christian. Mr. Christian. We can hear you.
Hello, hey, good evening commissioners, my name is Lynch Christian, I'm a resident and landowner and developer in Jefferson County. I'm in support of impact fees so long as the fee is justified by the growth rate of the county and based on sound methodology and, and real data. And I certainly believe growth should pay its pro-rata share of, of, of growth expense. I certainly believe growth should pay its pro rata share of, of, of growth expense. With that being said. The September, December 2020 edition of the Tischler-Bye study. Were a far cry from being based on, on sound methodology and, and good data. Most notably was the proposed substantial increase in the school growth component of the impact fee. Which was based on projections of strong school growth over the, over the upcoming years and an existing capacity issue. A look at the historical data over the last five and 10 years and even 15 years, which, which Mr. Lutman just referenced. Would lead us to believe that our, our school system is, is in fact not growing. It's shrinking in 2020. Kindergarten had an enrollment of 514 students and first grade had an enrollment of 518 students. That was the lowest enrollment in those two grades of the last 15 years. And it's not an outlier, albeit COVID-19 impacted certainly. The enrollment of first, second and third grade, well kindergarten, first, second grade has been decreasing every year. From 2017 to 2018, 2018 to 2019, 2019 to 2020. It's a trend. And further, it's a leading indicator for the next five years of elementary and middle school enrollment. And therefore, I'm in support in general of the June revision to the Tischler-Bye study. Which recommended the elimination of the elementary and middle school component of the, the school impact fee. It kept in, I believe, the high school. Component, but eliminated two of the decreasing population, decreasing school population. Aspects and I want to commend the commissioners who took a critical look at the September. And December additions of the study and encouraged Tischler-Bye to go back and look a little bit closer. Thank you all for being, looking out for, for the county certainly. And in closing, I would make one recommendation. And that would be to. I believe that when the study was first done at the end of 2020, the 2020 U.S. Census data, census data was not yet available. To Tischler-Bye or probably to the, to the county commissioners. I'd encourage Tischler-Bye to go back and look at that data and make sure that in the last 10 years. Jefferson County meets the requirement for a 1% growth rate over any five-year period. That would be.
Great. Thank, thank you, sir, that the time did go off. I do appreciate your comments and they're well-known.
Our next individual is Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, you just need to unmute yourself. Our next individual is Chris Reif. Mr. Reif, I have unmuted you.
I'm. It's, it's okay. I'm gonna public comment not on the impact fee.
Okay, all right, we'll come, I'm gonna put your hand down and I'll have you put it back up when we get to public comment.
Okay, thank you.
All right, our next individual, and I apologize if I did not pronounce your last name correctly. Josh Nimitz.
Yeah, I'm also not for the impact fund, so I'm gonna wait a little bit, sorry.
All right, no problem. Is there anyone else present who would like to make public comments on, or. Comment during the contact here. Daisy Tab.
Hi, can you hear me?
Can, yes.
Great, thank you. Yes, in regards to the schools, that's one area that I'd like to speak to as well on these impact fees. Number one, while student enrollment over the past 10 years. Has fluctuated and it might be decreased at the current time. When you look at the figures within the report, you can see in certain areas such as the middle school, it has increased. You know, I think when we make a statement that total enrollment has declined, we need to look at the specifics that are in this report. As to where those fluctuations have occurred. And while that might be the current figure, just recent decline. When you look at the projected enrollment over the next 10 years. This report undisputably says that you can expect an increase. One only has to look around to see all the new development and proposed development for the area. Take for instance, you know. Where Washington High School is and Hunt Field there, that school, that high school there is at 100% utilization. And when you look at the other utilization figures in here for capacity, our schools are between. 85 and 100% of capacity. And when families move into this area and they go to the, the Board of Education and say, I need to enroll my child. The Board of Education has to find a spot for them. They don't have a choice. So that's something that we need to be prepared for. And while there are bonds that are passed to fund new schools. Still, there is the mandate that the county provide a local share of funding to support capital improvements. So regardless of other means of funding, there still is that need for the county to, to provide. It, it's a little bit confusing looking at these numbers, especially when high schools. And the projections are kind of in the middle. Of, of these figures here that we'd only single out to include them in the impact fees and eliminate the elementary and middle schools. I, there, there doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason as, as to why that determination was made. So I am definitely in support of continuing to fund our schools without any. Decrease in that funding. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there anyone else who is interested in commenting during the impact fee portion of the public? I'm not seeing any.
Okay. All right, nobody else? All right. If that's the case, I will. You see somebody else, let us know once we get to the public comment. It's at 7:20. If we don't have any more, if there's no objection, I'll post the public comment, period. I, I would like to just add that we were waiting for the final draft to come back. From Tischler-Bye's, we were expecting to receive that today. And we did not receive it. So today at 4:30, I received a call from our legal counsel. Suggesting that we not vote on this until we have in hand the final document. So we, we are not going to take a vote on this tonight. We will be sure to put it on our next agenda item on August. August, August 5th. So August 5th, we will have a vote for the impact fee. Change or the, the recommendation that is before us and the revised impact fee report. Okay?
And I'd also like to point out that there's no, nothing here that said we were going to take any action after the public hearing, which. In future public hearings, if we're gonna take vote on it afterwards, I think we should have discussion and action so the public knows. They won't have any other opportunity to comment.
Yes.
Make it clear.
Sure, we researched that and actually that was something that was added. Anything on the agenda by. Robin's rules of order, open meetings act, you can take action on it and, and have action, action to vote on it. So. It doesn't have to have, you don't have to have action, discussion action on it.
Well, and I realize that, I just think it would, would give more clarity to our agenda, the public's more informed.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on to public, open to public comment, 7:20. So we have anybody. Favorable to speak tonight on that? If you have a few.
One person. Miss Reif, you can see to unmute yourself and you can make your public comment.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm Chris Reif. I, I am a property owner in Shepherdstown, the unincorporated part. I am here on behalf of myself and others within Jefferson County, homeowners, property owners. Who have banded together to create an organization called Neighbors for Neighborhoods, West Virginia. To protect our homes and properties from short-term rentals, raise the awareness of what short-term rentals are doing. To the rural. Composition of our neighborhoods. I attended the June Planning Board and the Planning Board actually. Is going to move to look at text amendments that's going to hit your plate at some point over the next couple of months. So the group and I wanted to kind of raise your awareness on a couple of things. One, it's coming. And two, wanted to kind of just bring this issue to you. Some of the short-term rental owners are saying Jefferson County unincorporated. Should be following home rule. We all know that that is not the case. We are not bound by home rule because we are unincorporated. Some of the county participants in Jefferson County that are incorporated. Have started to put some regulations on short-term rentals, it being their primary home. In Jefferson County, we have 176 unique listings for short-term rentals. That may or not, may not be giving the county the taxes that we should be receiving. Over the last two years, a number of county residents have been reporting to. The zoning committee, the planning committee, to the tax office, whoever they can report to violations by short-term renters. Or owners really, not the renters, that they had more guests than what the ordinance says, which is six. Which is a family. Number of rentals per week, they're only allowed to have one and they're having more. And not paying the appropriate taxes. At this point, there has been nothing done about it. So the violations have kind of not taken hold. Which has come to our attention. Just, just as an example of the impact these are having on just one rural community. In a two-tenths of a mile radius, there's about 10 homes. Five of those are short-term rentals. According to the current ordinance. It says that you can have six people in that rental one time a week. So if you find that, sorry.
That's, that's your time, man. Thank you for your comment. Do we have anybody else?
Is there anyone else who wants to make public comment? Another individual who had their hand raised earlier. Mr. Nimitz, did you want to make?
Uh, yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, my name's Josh Nimitz and I'm also commenting on the Airbnb and short-term rentals. I live at 1591 Not Road in Shepherdstown. And I wanted to talk about the impact that they're having on my community. I've had to spend hours and plenty of money to hang signs and cameras to protect my, my property. At the planning meeting in June, we were told that we were all, we should respect each other's property and no trespassing, yet this hasn't happened. I've had renters throw parties and have their guests park on my driveway. Completely blocking anything that I would need to do. Had people playing on the wires that hold my dock in the water. And I've also had renters let their dogs roam free, come all the way up my, probably three flights of stairs to get to my front door and. It's a problem. It hasn't been addressed after plenty of complaints. And the owners are not respecting our property and the county needs to take complaints seriously. I just wanted to thank you guys for your consideration. That should be it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment?
No, okay, I will, there, there are no objections. I'll post the regular public comment. I, I will add to, to those two last comments a little bit. It's the, the liaison to the planning commission. They did it in the June meeting. There was a group that wanted more flexibility there, short-term rentals, and there was a group that wanted more stricter guidelines for short rentals. The, they, myself. Certainly do believe and I, I was the one that moved the motion to, to, to instruct staff to write a more flexible. Amendment to, to allow short-term rentals. It, it's, as you know. Jefferson County is a normal one towards the county and the entire state, so it's, it's a way of hotels and short-term rentals. It's a big. It's, it's, it's a. It brings in a lot of money for our county and I did, and they said I did instruct everybody that, you know, you, you have private property rights and. And everybody needs to respect each other's property. And, and certainly there's a, this particular neighborhood is down on the river, so they're probably experiencing more short-term rentals during the summertime than they are the winter. And I think they're upset for some, some reasons, but at the end of the day. The, the folks who are renting their properties, they have a right to rent their properties and, and the people who live there full-time. They have a right to protect their property and keep not have anybody trespass on their property. So. Hopefully they, they can end this in a peaceful manner down there. I know it's, I got a few calls over, over the last couple of weeks of various complaints. So obviously with that, we're with the, the planning commission to write this amendment. And I'm sure that will end up at our, on our desk at some point once at least the planning commission. So. We'll, we'll schedule, kind of what should advance for those that are from game.
That I don't want to get into and debate about it, but if you recall. One of the issues with the Airbnbs is that we don't know they're Airbnb's. So that's the taxation issue is that we don't know if someone is renting their home out to an Airbnb unless they. Tell us and some people do tell us. Otherwise, we don't know. And that's one of the reasons that I, if you recall, we supported the, the bill that Net Gavin had presented on behalf of the CDB. To require Airbnb, the Airbnb providers, and it's not just Airbnb, any marketplace facilitator to collect. The hotel occupancy tax that Hilton passed, but I think that it hasn't become effective yet or it just, or it just didn't become effective. So there is legislation, there are taxation issues which we have been aware of and we have supported legislation to, to fix those taxation issues so that. We can actually know that someone is renting their home out.
Absolutely. All right. I can get anything. Oh, thank you. I'm sorry.
Hold down the roof.
But nothing else. Do you have anything you want to report on?
I do. When I would, you referred to the agenda. My item number. Number two regarding the solar text amendment, I have some information and some legal advice to present to the commission related to ongoing solar litigation. And then item number three. Is a. Is a challenge that has been filed regarding the text amendment for the property. It's near. The Rockwell facility, the Jefferson Rogers property and is being filed. I do not yet believe it has been served. But nonetheless, I would like to provide you with some legal advice on that issue. So I recommend that you go into executive session on this too.
Okay, I'm gonna go into executive session for item two and item three on our meeting conference agenda item here. Second, may I say aye?
Aye, I would just say we're going to executive session to receive legal counsel. We need to get the reason.
Yes, ma'am, to receive legal counsel. Amen, thank you. All right. Yes, ma'am. To receive legal counsel. Amen. Thank you. All right.
There's nothing else up here, I don't believe. Did that miss anything?
All right. Good. Much to come back down to the second session. Let's go ahead and move that second.
Second.
I'll say wish I had.
Hi.
Motion carries the answer. Thank you. All right. We're out of executive session. Do we have any committee commissioners? I'll start from the left. Commissioner Ted.
Um, meetings have been kind of sparse, I think during the summer. So I can't think of anything earth shattering I've been to or anything very important. But I do want to make one point. You know, through this, the agenda item, I realized, you know, we have the new draft impact fee study. And, you know, I was on the commission when we voted to send that draft back to the consultant. And I was disappointed that the commission as a body did not select the commissioner to participate in that discussion. I think it is the best way to act as a commission that we select the individual that if one or two individuals that would participate in such a discussion. And, you know, no personal offense to Commissioner Stollberg, but the president has no authority except to, besides any other commissioner, except to conduct the meeting. So I don't think it's an automatic that the president always goes to such meetings. So, well, it really wasn't a meeting, but, you know, consultation. So in the future, I'd like to have the opportunity to discuss, who should represent us, things like that.
Anything?
Yeah, a few meetings. Nothing too important. I just wanted to add. At last night's CTO meeting, there was a lady speaking against impact fees. I have her name written down. I'd rate with me, but I can get that to you, her name if you want it. But she, I just wanted her voice heard from there to here, too.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Now, we haven't really anything on the committees to report. I will say that I was invited to a meeting with the mayors next week. I have breakfast or lunch, can't remember. They want to talk about fireworks.
Oh, yeah. I saw that in the paper today. Yeah.
And so they claim, the cities claim it's difficult to police fireworks. As you see in that, on World of Law, it's the zoning, 2019 zoning map. It's hard to tell where ransom starts accounting and the city of Charles Town stops. So they feel it'd be easier to police if there was a blanket policy. Certainly, obviously, the county doesn't have any type of fireworks policy, as you know. I think he tried writing one in '17.
The draft was never adopted.
It never got adopted. So I don't know what we'll meet. And of course, I was quoted in the paper that I think it's, there's ways that we can maybe solve this, but certainly not a ban on the county. It's not something I have in mind. Maybe, I need to contact the fire chief and just see if there's a setback requirement. Maybe, we'll have a conversation. I don't know the words for that, too. Mr. Jackson?
Yeah. So I don't have any new updates on ESA. I reported that Captain Berger was promoted to director. So we'll have our first meeting in the next week. And then just to the point I made earlier, I did attend, participate with Mayor Traynor and City Manager Hennessy at the Martinsburg Housing Authority, just to explore what's coming in there, what resources are available. Jefferson County, what we can do. We gathered some ideas. So I'll have to meet with them, obviously, again, but homelessness is a big, big issue. But we're also the Section 8A Housing, which is very sparse here in Jefferson County, which the Martinsburg Development, or Martinsburg Housing Authority hands those vouchers out. And then, of course, Martinsburg has public housing for, and which we don't have that type of facility here either. So lots of discussions, lots of ideas to bring to the table and set with, with the city to try to figure out.
Those programs are administered by the city of Martinsburg, though, right?
So the, yes, so the housing authority originally started as Martinsburg, and it had to be within the city limits of Martinsburg. So it's just become the Eastern Panhandle pretty much, but it's still considered the Martinsburg. They hand out the vouchers for the Eastern, for Jefferson and Morton County, for the Section 8A housing. So even though it's called the Martinsburg, yeah, it's broadened to hand out the vouchers for, basically, the Eastern Panhandle. There's a Section 8A vouchers.
I didn't attend that meeting because I was with the West Virginia Development Office. I didn't attend that meeting because I was with the, what's your name, the development office, trying to work with them.
Yeah, so lots of good things that came out of there, but that we need to definitely set and discuss and figure out where to go, what options are available.
Ms. Jackson.
I don't have any kind of updates to report on, but I did have one question for Trish and Jane. I know last week we got the numbers on the fixed wireless estimates for broadband. Do you have any updates on what the timeline would look like for that?
Oh, so I didn't actually, I, no, I don't.
I can, so at our last broadband meeting, we actually expanded the focus a little bit, which might actually help us, because there, there's a problem if you are infringing on an area that has been, that is designated an ARDOF area, that's been promised to Frontier, and there are a lot of places in Jefferson County where Frontier said they're providing the service, or going to provide the service, and they get to, they get first dibs on that, and in fact, one of our neighboring counties received grant funding to build towers and put fixed wireless up, and it was, their application was denied, because Frontier went to a meeting and said, no, that infringes our ARDOF area, and we have priority for that area. However, during our last meeting, there are, we currently use the Blue Ridge, what we call the Blue Ridge site, which is in Norfolk Southern Tower, to house our 911 equipment, and it reaches the entire valley, and we, a couple of years ago, we had wanted to add equipment to that, and Norfolk Southern discovered that they were at capacity, could not, and we thought we were going to work in conjunction with them to expand the capacity of that tower, but then the higher-ups at Norfolk Southern said, no, we can't do that. So we discovered that this Blue Ridge site is also a potential to expand broadband on the mountain. So what we're thinking is, we might be able to use the funding to build the towers using a public safety purpose. So we had Russell Burgess, our IT director, and our contractor on the, in the meeting last time, and so we'd like to explore actually building our own tower on the Blue Ridge site to house communications equipment, and then it could also house a wireless provider. And if they put it on themselves, so if we build a tower for public safety, which we would do, and there are also some towers in the valley that we would, where we would maybe build or enhance them for the reasons of public safety or for a county purpose, then those providers could put them on the towers, you know, and start providing services and use it out. And then that doesn't infringe, that doesn't violate, I don't think the ARPA funds if you do it that way, using that specification. The Blue Ridge site, most of the sites, I think, are county-owned, but the Blue Ridge site, we would have to negotiate with the landowner to get that property, and I think Commissioner Jackson has already reached out to that landowner, and then we would have to build the tower. And I talked to David Deemer, we were in another meeting yesterday, and he indicated that he would like to do a propagation study on the tower for the Blue Ridge site, but that would be beneficial not only for this residence, well, it'd be beneficial for the residents in many ways, expansion of broadband, but also having our own communications tower with our own equipment and being able to serve that site, you know, on our own. We have a very favorable lease for Norfolk Southern, it's really great to us, but we don't, so I don't know the timeframe, some of it, which is a matter of actually just like putting the equipment on the towers, but I think, if I understand the way that it works, that Blue Ridge tower, they kind of all ping off of that.
Yeah, so the landowner is definitely going to want it, so we just don't know what we need and what to tell them we're requesting, but to your fixed comment, which we talked about the Comcast situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot, is, and I kind of just off the cuff talked to Michelle about this yesterday when I stopped at the office, but, is that Comcast only runs so far, but there are, so I live in Shamondale, but it's the tire mountain side, and I think it's other pockets of Jefferson County as well. I have Comcast for internet, so the wires run, but I've got like two neighbors down, they Comcast want $6,000 for them to tie in. So it's like the lines are there, and then people, because we had a couple of public comments about this before, they're being told 10,000, 14,000, and so I don't know how to address that.
Yeah.
To find either some negotiable rate from Comcast that'll allow these people to tie in, if the lines are already there, like, everybody around them have Comcast, and we've got this one house in the middle, it's like, oh, well, we need $10,000 to run the line, so that would be, you know, something that we.
Yeah, just, you know, I live on Old Lee Town Pike, and my house is close to the road. Comcast had already put the line up before I even signed up for it. My son, a quarter of a mile down the road, but his lane is half a mile long. So there's your $6,000 to get it, you know, it's going by the main road, but it's not back to the south.
And I think the state is going to make, from their, the funds that they receive, they're going to have a program that will be able, providers provide that last mile of service, so that may be helpful to some of the residents. I know, they have not released the specifics of that program, but it sounds like some of our residents who are close to Comcast but can't get it to house, would qualify for that program, but the way that it was explained to me is, it would be Comcast saying, you know, we're going to finish this last mile of wiring.
Right.
So they, I think the provider, the way that it's currently, or the way that they're visioning rolling up a program right now, is that the provider would have to apply for the grant funds from the state, but the state is setting up some of their ARPA funds to provide broadband, and there are three different programs, and I apologize, I don't remember all three of the programs, but one of them is the last mile of service, so that would, and I will say that Comcast, the Comcast representative has been in the public on all of our broadband meetings. So they, yes, yes, and now that we're looking at other providers, and we've been talking, I think they're interested.
Yeah. Well, even, I mean, and I understand there are costs associated, but it just, you've got, like, somebody so close, they can't get it, or they're tough, the quote is all over the place to sign it.
Yeah.
It's just.
And we have, our own parks and rec, they ended up paying Comcast to send service to them because they did not get it reliable to their other provider, and I, they paid a pretty big amount.
So, so I think your, the answer to the question is, there might be some short-term quick fixes, but maybe that big one that we want up on the mountain will take longer.
We still don't have like, we want it like yesterday.
Yeah.
We want to get in as quick as possible, because technology updates itself like in seconds.
And the state, I mean, because the state is offering funding, we want to see, you know, if we get there. If we have the funding, then we'd like to use their funding rather than using our own funding. So we do, we did put a line in our request for us to use our funds to do it, but there may be state programs that will, that overlap with what we were thinking of doing. So, yeah, I would like that. I actually did think when I, when we first, you know, when he first presented to the broadband committee, it sounded so easy, you know, there are all these towers you can fix, you know, keep parameters, and I'm like, this is great, but now, now I think that we're getting into the weeds, it's slowing us down a little bit, now that we're getting, you know, into the detail, you know, how we're actually going to do it, but, I mean, we are, we are making progress, and we are moving forward, but just a little slow, more slower than I think we would like.
Yeah, well, it's not just like there's just a big pot of money you can pull out, so you've got to, for one area to get, to do some service fix, you know, you have to qualify for certain funding and all that, and so we want to maximize our dollars, you know.
Yeah, well, and that, those ARDOF areas are really helpful for other communities around the state who wanted to do things.
Okay, well, thank you. Is there anything else? Hearing nothing, everybody shaking their head. If there are no objections, we adjourned.